December the 6th, want to welcome everyone to our city council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. And if everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Deb.
Tony.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum tonight. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Entertained a motion then to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Don. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Tony.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Across the mayor's desk, just like to thank Shay Tilges today to been our videographer. And I wanted to thank Rodney and Jean Davis and the others who organized our community Thanksgiving Day dinner. And everyone actually who helped that day as well. It was, it's a great longstanding tradition and very much appreciated by the community. So, thank you very much.
Glad when it comes around once a year, but.
And a reminder, this coming Saturday, Saturday, December the 11th at 7:00 PM is a holy rock-a-rol- holy rock-a-rolls. Concert, anyway, it's a rock concert. It's a great family show. They've been here before and tickets are available at the door. They're also available at the Chamber office, at the Hy-Vee, and Brown Shoe Fit, I believe, too. So, and gee, some good news, our newly remodeled library is now open. And I think probably that either Lori or Jacob has something to add to that in the future here. So, anyone else have anything? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move to the update from the city administrator.
On that note, Lori, if you'd like to come up and share the news on the library.
Hello, everyone. That was our good news. We have opened, we had a very successful day. We opened the doors at 10:00 and there were people in the library before that time. When I left, we had about 135 people tallying. And I know that we missed a lot as they came through the door. We have a special event Thursday that would like to invite everyone to attend. From 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, we have carols and cocoa. And from 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening, we have storytime with Santa. So, we would love to see everyone. That is something we've been looking forward to. We will continue running with the same hours that we have been holding at our temporary location. We'll do that through the month of December and then in January, we'll take a look and see if we want to expand hours. Anything else that you'd like to add about the opening?
Pop in.
Oh, our theme this week is pop in to see our progress. So, if you do decide that you'd like to pop in, we have little bags of popcorn as you leave. We don't have everything finished in our building. However, we are expecting most of our furnishings to come in next week, which we're very excited about. The few remaining ones are scheduled to come in at the beginning of January. And also Thursday, when we do have our event, you'll see more work being done because they're putting the graphics on the wall to add a little color and interest. So, if you pop in, you'll see work that continues to be done. And it's going to take us a little while, but we're making steady steps forward. So, that's a good thing. One other thing I'd like to mention is that we did accept the resignation of Vera Scrivener, who's our children's librarian. We're sorry to see her go and we thank her very much for all the work that she's done for the city over the number of years since she's been here. So, do any of you have questions for me about the library?
What's the current hours again, Lori, then, right now?
We open at 10:00 in the morning and we close at 5:00. On Tuesday and Thursday, we are open until 7:00 in the evening. And then we'll be open on Saturdays from 10:00 to 12:00. So, hope to see everyone this week or next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Now, after Lori says that about the library, the cocoa and cards on December 9th, that's 4:00 to 6:00, Thursday could end up being a really fun evening for everybody because from 5:00 to 7:00 over at Algonah Publishing is the local photographer's art show. So, you can go from the library over to Algonah Publishing and take in the local artist's show opening, or it's the photographer's show opening. And then after that, you can find a nice warm TV to sit in front of and watch the Iowa State game, the basketball game. Be a fun night.
All right. Very good.
I just want to add, the library opening, this is certainly a very exciting, but in years in the works, but we're not done yet. There's still exterior work to do, there's still interior things to finish up. But we're happy at least to get the operations back in their home and give people access to the full library again. So, I'm sure down the road, as we knock out some of those final milestones, we'll have some more events celebrating what's been accomplished and the community support for the project. Then one other quick item on the library, mid-thr move, there will be a moving sale out at the temporary library location, which is the old Ernie Williams, Harley, Davidson. It'll be December 11th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's a silent auction type for shelving, furniture, miscellaneous items. So, just want the public to be aware of that. They can stop out on the 11th from 10:00 to 1:00. And then all items purchased need to be picked up by the 18th.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Agenda item number seven, this is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here in the council chambers that would like to speak? Or is there anyone on the phone? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move to agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda. And that includes approving the minutes from our November 15th work session, as well as the minutes from the November 15th regular city council meeting. And then the minutes from November the 29th, when we had a joint city council meeting with the Parks and Rec Commission, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, approve a Class C liquor license for Miller Sports Bar and Grill, and approve Jacob's administrators' report.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Rodney. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Tony.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move to agenda item number nine, which pertains to the hotel motel tax reports.
We have representatives from Camp Algonah, the POW Museum, and the Chamber of Commerce here this evening to provide a summary of the revenues of hotel motel tax revenues this year. Do you have to turn us off?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to come and visit with you about the hotel motel tax. We have been recipients of this since about 2002. And I can very safely say, without the hotel motel tax, our museum may not even exist. Or it certainly wouldn't be in the shape that it's in, drawing the kind of visitors that we've drawn over a period of time. We keep records of the number of people that come to the museum. And we have averaged about 2,500 visitors since 2010. And this year, even though we didn't open until June 1st, we just totaled up today, we have 1,500 visitors that have come through our doors since the 1st of June. With good weather and the rest of December, Hawaii, it will do us very well. Also, one of the things that the hotel motel tax has helped us to do other than what is in the letter that Mr. Hanson has written to you about taking care of this last year without visitors coming in, without being able to collect admission, we've been able to stay afloat mainly because of the hotel motel tax. We also, since 2014, have been able to employ college-trained interns to our museum. And what they do is not only welcome visitors and host them there, but they provide us with information which gives us some of the best practices, the newest things that are in museums to help us keep our museum up to date. Interesting that of the number of young people that have come, the first one came to us from Clearlake. He just graduated from William and Mary College. It's the oldest college in the United States. They have the claim to fame that the only day that they missed is when the British stormed the Capitol and closed them down for a day. But what Zach was able to do for us that summer, he came three days a week, wasn't paid, and provided us with some tremendous opportunities to look at what we have for our exhibits and how we can make them better. Since then, mainly because of hotel motel funds, we've been able to employ seven interns over the period from 2012-2013-2014 until the current time. And four of them were college graduates in museum studies. And after they left Camp Algonah, not because they were at Camp Algonah, but when they left, they were able to get jobs and be employed in museum studies. And we just as well toot our horn because we have two kids, two of these former interns that are in Washington, DC. One is at the Bureau of the Mint, hosting a museum or operating a museum there. The other, the other one is in the Museum of the American Army, that Seth was able to be on the ground floor and help to design and put his trademark on there. And so, that has been something that has been, been great for us because we're all amateurs when it comes to creating museum exhibits and hosting people. They've helped us tremendously. So, without the hotel motel tax, we would not have been able to afford them. One of the other things that we, that we do, just got an email when I was home before I came here, a middle school from Akron Westfield wants to come to the museum and do research on the History Day competition. Now, National History Day is something that has been going on for a long time. And they do a particular topic that is all assigned to everyone. At middle schools and high schools can do this at different levels. And we've been able to help students in the past, as we will with Akron Westfield, in doing research and see how Camp Algonah can fit into their particular topic and give them an opportunity to compete at this, this level. And we also have a new airport project that is, it has been up now for a while. We're going to have our opening next spring when the weather is a little more predictable. But up until, we were able to purchase a historical marker. Cassuth County did not have a historical marker. Only county out of 99 that didn't have a historical marker. Many of you, I'm sure, when you travel, like to stop at historical markers. Sometimes people don't like to stop at them. I'm one that will try to turn in every chance I get. But this helps us be able to highlight what Camp Algonah has been to our history back in the days that it was in operation in World War II and now what it is to us historically. And so, that marker will go on the airport grounds, fairly close to where the original gate was that allowed people in. Built around the historical marker is a shed that is a, basically a replica of the check-in place or the guardhouse where people drove in when they checked into the camp. And so, with those things that we have been able to do, we feel like we've made good use of the hotel motel tax. And would entertain any questions that you might have.
As far as your visitors, do you have a lot come locally? Do you have a lot come quite a ways? How far away do people come from?
I would say the great majority of them are from out of town. They may be from Cassuth County, but they're, we have visitors from in-town certainly too. But the great majority are from out of town. More from Minnesota than any other place. Those folks up there just want to get away from Minnesota and come to Iowa. That's fine. We've been a little slow with buses this year. We had, we've had two now. One came on Saturday from Eastern Iowa. And they're a little cautious with the COVID. But most of them have been from out of town. And of course, statistics tell us anytime that we get someone into our community from out of town, that gives them the opportunity to spend dollars and those dollars then multiply. And so, we've been very pleased that we've been able to do that.
Yeah, because I think when the buses stop, don't they quite often view that and maybe go for lunch somewhere in the area?
They do, yes, they have. And they also hit the other museums as well. Not necessarily every time, depends on how much they have. But they'll go to the Agnesport, they'll go to the County Historical Society, and the Nativity Scene as well. Kind of depending on how much time they, they have. So, that's, that's great for the community. Other questions?
Very good. Well, thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one.
Harley.
All right.
I can probably talk a lot enough. I'll just put on the outside voice. Thanks for the opportunity, first of all. And we have, the Chamber has also been the recipient of these dollars since the inception of the tax, which that process was led by the Chamber. So, very pleased that the community supported that with their vote. And as you know, the Chamber's role is to bring people into Algonah and then into the businesses and organizations once they get here, to get them in their doors. But to think back on what Jerry talked about, the Chamber and POW Museum has partnered for several years for a Travel Iowa Marketplace opportunity. We helped with some expenses and they helped by sending representatives and setting up a display and talking to the bank tours and the travel clubs and whatever. That process was stopped just due to some organizational situations by the state and here before COVID. But I've heard rumors that they are going to get that back going again. And it's actually, there was a lot of visitors generated from that. And that was another good use of the hotel motel tax. So, I think all of you should have had the Chamber's report in your packets. We are always looking for new ways to bring people into town for new activities, new activities. We're going to take one of our current activities and expand it into more of a family festival for this fall, which hopefully will increase traffic throughout the community. Because no matter what you do, when you bring people into town, they usually spend money in a lot of other places too, which is what the ultimate goal is. So, with that, and then we're also going back to our calendar of events. We've had a lot of people that are asked, you know, when we can bring those back? They are the tabletop calendars that are available in all the restaurants and in the public places. And so, we're, we're getting that back rolling again and hope to have those on display shortly after the first of the year. We've got some promotional brochures that are in need of updating. Unfortunately, we print stuff, usually about the time it rolls out the press, it's already out of date. So, that's kind of a work in progress. But those are kind of our plans for something new for 2022. And looking very promising to get that on the calendar with all of the events that we typically have promoted. So, anyone have any specific questions for me?
No, just thank you for all the work you've done. I really appreciate what you do with celebrations. Like the renovation of Founder's Day. It's been pretty good.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a fun thing to do. It's, it's good that we're, we're looking like we can get back to normal, whatever that might look like for 2022. So, thank you for your support, we appreciate that too.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Overall, for, for the year, calendar year 2021, our revenues for hotel motel tax were only $29,237. This was about 6.5% below what we were at the previous year, which two of the quarters were impacted by COVID. But all in all, you can see, we fared pretty well in terms of, we were appearing a much more significant drop in those revenues. I know across the state average was much higher than 6.5%. How the fund is distributed is 25% goes to the Chamber of Commerce, 20% goes to Camp Algonah POW Museum. The remaining funds, 15% goes out to Area Economic Development Corporation. They use those funds to support personnel. In recent years, that's been used to pay city economic development staff. So, in 2021, they use those funds to reimburse the city for economic development staff as well as pay for some professional services. We came to Little Sprouts Daycare, which they were a financer of that project. And then 20% of the funds goes to the Parks and Rec Department for capital projects. That gets put in a specific capital fund. That's being used for Tees Park Shelter House this year. And then the other 20% goes to the city's general fund.
Okay. We need a motion then to receive and accept these reports, is that correct, Jacob? Or we're just, it's just information to receive and accept it?
Yeah, a motion to receive made for the, for the record, maybe, sure.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to receive for the record these reports from the Chamber and the POW Museum.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We'll do it that way. Okay. Move to agenda item number 10, which pertains to a dangerous building on 708 South Phillips Street.
Earlier this year, a building official here at it sent a notice in order to remove a dangerous building located at 708 South Phillips Street. The owner being Ronald Fitz. That order has been appealed, I believe, since this year. Excuse me, Dever, do you want to, rather than move the background, start us off?
Down at 708 South Phillips, be the Fitz Service Center down there. The south portion of this building, here's a picture of it. You can see that south portion of the building with the way it's actually sitting. We got canopies falling off. But that hasn't had a roof on that portion of the building. I've gone through, I think, Jacob, you've gone through assessor sites, aerial photos, and I think clear back into 2012.
2015 was the last to be found.
So, it's been, been many years. I have had some interaction with some of the citizens down in that part of town and even from council here a little bit. Trying to get that south side of town to be a little bit more beautified. This is just a step in that direction. And I put the notice in order together just to take care of that south portion of the building. The intent here is it's not being adequate. One of the intents of the building, it cannot be used for that intent of the building with no roof, trees growing out of it to that extent. So, that's where the notice in order come into play on that. Along with, when we start seeing properties of this nature, it does start to become a public nuisance along with, eventually, children are going to find this and it starts to be an attraction to draw children into this for safety hazards of that nature as well. So, that was all put together. I believe you guys got a copy of the notice in order. So, that's where this is coming from, from that's an extent.
Okay. Thank you, Dever. Anybody have any questions for Dever first, or? Okay, and then Ron, I believe, would you like to speak to this? You're welcome to come up to the podium there like Dever did.
First, excuse me, I, it's the first time I've ever been on one of these meetings. I don't know what the procedure is. I, I reported back, I said, I, Ronald Fitz, am appealing the notice to Molly on the south half of the building at 708 South Phillips, per attached letter. I agree the building needs a new roof, but the outside walls are sturdy and not warped, buckled, and settled, as it said. And in the picture you saw, you have the picture, the other letter. The awning that's hanging there has been removed, that's no longer there. That was, I guess, a danger of falling on somebody. They would have trespassing in order to get there. But the outside walls are sturdy, they've been inspected, there is no warped, there's no danger of wind blowing them over. They're, they're concrete and brick. Okay, and then I just had, I should be given ample time to completely remove the remaining roof and trees because the roof, if anybody got in there, it would be a danger. But it is secure, they can't get in there. So, there's no danger of a roof falling on any individual. And the trees, yes, I've been removing those. They actually, from when the roof fell in, there was, it's amazing, the, it was a built-up roof which is rock. But it's, it's really amazing how much dirt accumulates on a roof. And when that fell, that's what the trees were growing in is that, is that. And I have been removing them, I've been removing the, the old pebble that was on the roof and stuff. I've been removing it. But I am 85 years old. My days are harder every day. I, I don't work 10-hour days anymore like I once did. And I really don't have the resources to hire somebody. I did have a man hired to, but he ended up in the hospital with a, not related to, to me, but he ended up in the hospital with a toe infection. And he may have to have the toe removed. So, he's not been able to help me the last two weeks. But he was very willing to help. And also to, you can't really tell. But in the north half, there is a basement underneath the front part of my existing building. And that entrance is in the center, in the center part of that. And to remove that building, I don't know how, what kind of an entrance I would do for the basement and stuff. So, it's.
So, Ron, the basement's just under the part you're using now with the roof on?
Yes, but the entrance is, and the stairway is in the center, center part.
Okay.
And we used that as an office for many years. And as all of you know, my wife's been gone about six, seven years now. And I have a hard time getting things done.
How do you have, sorry?
I don't have a big bank account that I can hire, hire anybody to come in.
I was just going to ask you, you said that the south part is, is secure. Can you tell us how it's secure?
Well, the back door, which you don't see on here.
Doors locked?
There's a padlock on that and it's locked. The south door right now, there, at one time, there was a garage on the south side and that's the south, sitting there is sitting on that concrete floor that was, was in the garage.
Okay.
Yeah. That, and that door right now is not real secure, but I'm in the process of redoing that. So, nobody can get in there. Like I said, that overhang there, that's gone, that's, that's been removed.
If you plan on putting a roof on there, how long do you think it'll take for you to do that?
Probably two years.
I just want to let the council know, according to our property maintenance ordinance that we have just passed this year, buildings are required to be one-type. that we have just passed this year, buildings are required to be one type. You cannot have boarded up broken windows or open gaps. On this building, I see at least three or four boarded up doors and windows. Above the front door, I believe it's got a sign on it, there's a big hole in the wall. There's also other broken windows in there. So, if you decide to allow them to put a roof on there, there's more things that have to be done to bring it up to the property maintenance code, so he's not in violation than just putting a roof on.
That's one of the things that I have an objection with the city. I have never seen a copy of the code. I've never been told. All of a sudden, I got this red certified letter in the mail, and that's the first notification I got, so.
Dever did stop down and have a conversation with Mr. Fitz.
That was the day I received the certified, yeah, same day.
So, Ron, the lawnmowers and that, that are on the outside, have, are those gone? Or have you cleaned those up?
They're in the process. Harley Hawes, who used to be a city employee, used to help me. And of course, Harley is gone now. And so, I'm looking for somebody else to help do that. But probably one of the, I can't think of his name. But he took a lot of the stuff last year, and then we just split 50/50 for the junk price of it. And I plan on doing that again. But like I say, it all takes time. And I'm still trying to operate and keep people happy with their snowmowers and lawnmowers.
Even our previous building codes, I'm assuming there was things that this building wasn't up to code by far, whether it's current, the ones we just updated or not. And, you know, I don't know what to say to you, Ron. This, you've given me years of service on my moors and stuff. You've had a wonderful business. But I look at this and I just don't know how this is repairable or would get repaired within a certain amount of time. And I understand your part about demolition, even if you were forced to demo and you're unable to do it. So, what does that mean? How does that get rectified? I'm not for sure. But I see this as a safety factor in a building that needs to, and you've even said it yourself, Ron, you're 85. I want you to retire, I want you to relax, I want you to have a great time in life. And this doesn't seem to be what you would do to do that. I, to me, this part, the building, that part needs to go and it needs cleaned up there. It really does. And Dever's doing what we've asked him to do for the city, to make sure that we don't have this coming in. And we have a city that, you know, a great entrance when they come in, they're cleaned up. And I gotta back Dever on this one because we've already voted to have that in my mind. And I just think, I just don't see how we get this part fixed up. I appreciate your wanting to do that, and I know it's been your livelihood. I don't, I can't, probably don't understand that as well. I'm just thinking of the city as a whole, and I don't know what we do here. I mean, if you can't demolish it, what happens then?
What?
I mean, let's say you, we don't, I mean, we don't vote to go with the, what you're asking us to do, give you the time, I mean, and you can't demolish it by January 11th or whatever the date is on there, then what happens? I'm just asking.
Would that mean us hold in protection route?
Yeah, and then eventually nothing happens and it just sits there still, or?
Well, and then eventually it goes before the judge, and then the judge will order him to take it down and decide what his fine is. And then if he doesn't do it by the time the judge tells him to do it, then he's in contempt to court and everything else.
I guess I kinda have the same question that Rodney had. At your age, why do you want this?
You can't hang a sign out in the doors saying closed. I have thousands and thousands of dollars worth of inventory. What do you do with it?
Well, people have sales.
Well, and I know you have it in the building with the, most of it's probably in that building that has a roof on, your inventory, I assume. I don't think that's the question, the question that's the building next to it.
But it's all connected.
Yeah.
Bill, it's not three separate buildings.
You'd still be able to do business out of the, out of the building that has the roof on it and that's the...
That's where I'm working out of, not yet.
Right, yeah. Yeah. So, if the building without the roof wasn't there, you still would be able to operate your business in that, in that building right to the north of it?
Just have a mind real quick. So, the council understands, when I put these together, there's a standard, I try to keep them all standard. You got 30 days to do this. You know, so many days to get your, your 30 days to get your demo committed, have it done in 90 days. That's our standard wording, so everybody is treated fairly in these situations. This isn't the first one I've sent out this year. Along with that, if we come up with a plan to work through this, even though it's not down in 90 days, and we have a plan moving forward to get this rectified and resolved, I'm willing to work with Mr. Fitz on this on the finding side. It's when people just dig their heels in and say, "I'm not doing anything," that's when the fines would apply. So, you guys understand that. That's a thought process there.
What option that could be looked at if it's a matter of just needing some time to figure out a plan to appropriately remedy the solution is setting a deadline for a plan to be presented in the interim, the doors and the windows to the building be secured in a way that's consistent with our property maintenance code to ensure that, you know, if it is a nuisance like that, that attracts people, that, you know, it's secured and someone's not going to be easily be able to get in. So, that would be an interim move while the plan is put together, appropriately addressing the solution this entire area.
It seems like we can kind of work on a plan.
Yeah.
And come to a little bit of a compromise. Dever's willing to help him. You're willing to probably do some things. It may take him a little bit more time than somebody else. And maybe we need to give him some more time.
I think, too, to concentrate on the outside, too, is a big factor here, I think, with the appearance. So...
And the picture that's there was taken probably two months ago. And I have cut down many of those trees that you see there now.
Okay, good.
And that's what that gentleman was helping me do, was cut the trees down. And then he's ended up disabled.
Yeah, okay.
Great. If you're saying that allowing more time, how much time? Because Mr. Fitz said he'd need two years. Do you want this to go on for two years? That's, you know, I guess...
He was referencing putting a roof on it two months.
Well, shave him 90 days. You guys are saying more time. How much more time do you want us to allow? That's what we need clarity.
Well, and I think we need to look at a plan. You know, it's not necessarily that you're gonna do that all yourself. As far as I can see, the only reason you want that south part of the building is to have access to the basement. Maybe there's somebody else that wants that part of the building and would be willing to renovate it.
There was another man that was talking about, and I don't know whether that's even viable, but he was talking about a business. He wanted to rent the south half.
Well, actually, in the picture, the walls, like you say, the walls do look good. You know, I would have to look at them close to see if that's really true or not, but from a photo, they look good. And yeah, if you put a roof on there, we're able to clean it up inside. I assume it's sitting on cement. You know, maybe it would be feasible to...
This building originally was a farm dairy. There was a dairy in there and they made butter and collected cream from the farmers and everything. But that's what the building originally was. That's why there's separate rooms is for butter and whatever.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I guess I would be in favor of allowing you some time. I don't, how much the 90 days does he have left? Was just notified?
Well, his 30 days were up when he brought in the appeal, so his time stopped. He's still got 60 days.
January 11th is what's been cut off this for the 90 days.
Okay.
But when he appealed it in November, that stopped. So, he's got 60 days from today's date.
Okay. So, with that, I don't know if we really are required to, or we have to come up with any more time. If there's two months yet, I would think that'd be enough time for you and Dever to work together and come up with a plan. And if more time is required...
I'm completely willing to work with a plan, but there was no plan.
Yeah, I know. But that's why I think, I think there's possibilities here that maybe could be, you know, successful, so. So, it sounds like 60 days. There's a couple of months then that you and Dever can work together so that someone can come back with a plan and present it again in 60 days to us.
Okay. I would think we'd need some answers within 60 days.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, and not, yeah.
Maybe see an update in 30 days? Maybe see an update in 30 days to where we're at?
Yeah, if Dever just wants to keep us updated in...
30 days.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks a lot for coming forward.
No, Ron, thank you for your years, but...
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Number 11, and this pertains to the amended budget of AMU that we talked about in our work session.
As mayor, so this accepts an AMU budget amendment. The amendment includes an increase in revenues of slightly over $10 million and then an increase in expenditures of approximately $5.9 million. The AMU board trustees approved the amendment on December 1st.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody. Any discussion? Hearing unvoted, please, Deb?
Jody?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 12, this is concerning the 2022 calendar year budget of AMU.
This resolution adopts AMU's budget for next year. AMU board trustees met on December 1st and approved the budget.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion from Don, a second from Tyler. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing unvoted, please, Deb?
Jody?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 13 deals with 2021 engineering agreement.
13 is the task order to the 2021 engineering agreement to add, design a reconstruction of Phillips Street, Booster Street, as well as the Moore Street, Call Street parking lot, that's the parking lot behind the Wellcome Center. All three of those projects, reconstruction proposed for 2022. Matt Bull with Bull Make Engineering is here. If you want to kind of take this agenda item, just kind of talk street projects in general, what we have under the current engineering agreement, the projects underway, as well as proposed task order, medical requests.
All right, Mayor, Council, thank you. Task order three is for Phillips Street from Diagonal Street to Elm Street, I believe. And then Booster Street from Kennedy to McGregor. That was part of the Millin' Overly project that was potentially added that we decided needed to be full reconstructed based on current curb conditions and street conditions and storm sewer conditions. And then the Call Street parking area, looking to get some stormwater management put in there and redesign the parking lot to potentially have, I know there's talk about electric vehicle terminal plugin. So, we're doing some storm sewer treatment options there along with full resurfacing of the parking lot. Then back up to Phillips Street, just up to the next one, along the elementary school there, that corridor, full reconstruct on that project. All these reconstructed projects are for concrete pavement, similar to what we did on Main Street, Moore Street, Snap-on Drive, this year's project. Something else you want me to add, Jody? Are there any questions, I guess?
I just have one, and I really haven't had a chance to ask Jacob about this or in the work session. But Phillips Street is three blocks from North Street or Diagonal up to Elm. I'm just wondering what the possibility is to complete that and go clear to the cemetery or clear to Pine Street rather than stop two blocks? Just, I mean, the whole street is in bad shape, and I just wonder what the possibility is of completing that project and...
So, I mean, that would be an option. We had looked at this because, you know, like the Main Street where most of the homes face the side streets and you just have a couple that face Main, just, you know, the logistics that come with that. On Phillips Street, you know, all the homes face the street. So, just from a logistic, construction-wise and impact on homeowners is going to be quite a bit. So, we thought it made sense to break it up into two halves. So, you know, the people impacted, you know, this year, you know, can use some less space in the north. You know, it would be another two blocks and complete the whole thing. That is a, you know, something that could be done now if you have any additional considerations.
Yeah, I see why you guys, I see why you originally eliminated the north two blocks as all the same project just for, yeah, access, construction access is always difficult. Phasing a project that's only five blocks long is more difficult because the contractor, you know, doesn't have a lot of time to get the underground work done and then leave for a month or two to get the street work done, to start the underground work in the next phase. It normally works out better with bigger projects. With a five-block job, I mean, it's definitely feasible. I know we're gonna be planning on getting all these jobs bid out early to have a full construction season to do all the work that's scheduled for next year in town. So, I guess if it's something that you want us to look into, we can definitely, you know, add it to it.
I just, I didn't know, money-wise, I didn't know, construction-wise, what made sense if that was much more difficult or not, or, you know, I just, I hadn't had a chance to ask Jacob about that, so.
I think constructability-wise, it's all gonna be the same. It's just resident access is gonna be the biggest thing there, I think, to consider.
Would it slow down the whole project a lot to do twice as long? I mean, would the residents who can't use their driveway, would they be without access for a much longer period because of the...
I mean, we could set up the underground work to say, you know, Elm Street South, underground work can be done. And then maybe back to gravel or something, because, you know, a concrete contractor is gonna wanna come in and do the whole stretch at one time. With it only being four blocks, they paved Main Street one day, that kind of stuff. So, I think pricing-wise, to split the underground work so the north, a couple blocks, will have, you know, another month or two months potentially of minimal disturbance. The people in the south half will be able to get back to their driveways with gravel access, that kind of stuff, until the concrete crew would come in and pave the whole stretch. We could do some, we definitely talked about phasing and put it in the plans for eliminating as many access problems as possible. It's still gonna be inconvenience like every construction project, but with the school there on the, on the south block and everything, there's already gonna be some, some access, you know, restrictions for, that would put in the plan so the contractor just can't do whatever they want. We'll have to think about a plan and design the utilities to be constructed to eliminate access problems. There's also the dead end street of Lucas. I know you can still get there from the recycle center, but all that needs to be considered in design.
Good. I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Well, I think that's what we did talk about. But was your question hardly out? Guess what I thought you were at, maybe that's what you were trying to answer. Whether it's three or five blocks and they get a 90-day contract, 90-day, they can do three or five Whether it's three or five blocks and they get a ninety-day contract, ninety day, they can do three or five blocks in a ninety-day contract, that's not the issue, I don't think.
Yeah, and it's, it's not going to be set up like, like Main Street was with a working day contract, it'll be a completion day contract, so we'll give them, you know. I guess as of right now, we're, we're thinking about bidding all the projects as, as one, one project instead of splitting it up into two, that you're not dealing with two separate contractors, multiple different subs, suppliers, all that stuff. So, I mean, if we add it, well, obviously we're adding cost to the project, but I think.
But it really doesn't add much, probably more time.
No, I don't think so.
Is what you're saying, it wouldn't add much more, because if they can pay four, they pay four blocks in one day, it could probably be five in a day and a half or one day.
Yeah, it'll add, it'll add three or four weeks' worth of, of underground work and, and creative work. So it'll add, you know, a month or so, month and a half to the construction schedule, but with, with McCoy Street and Phillips and Booster and the parking lot, and there's a lot of work to get done in, in one season.
We saw that this year.
To, to start with, so. Yeah, from a, from a designer engineering standpoint, adding two blocks is, is no big deal.
So we could, you know, approve a contract tonight as presented with the caveat of hey, look at, you know, maybe these additional two, you know, amend that in the future if we decide to go that route. Another op, and some of it's just from the, you know, capacity of taking on a project, you know, from the city management standpoint, you know, last year was about as busy as we've had in twenty years. This, this next year is going to be a lot more even so. So we want to make sure that, you know, we can, we can manage it appropriately. Another option might be if we wanted to add these, these two blocks on Phillips and finish that entire stretch. You know, right now we've got two blocks of Booster program as well. If you wanted to, you know, possibly look at delaying that project, so, so all of Phillips could be done.
Yeah, yeah, moving things around, or, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be feasible to look at. Cost-wise, I mean, I think, yeah, adding these two blocks and removing Booster, Booster has a long block and needs some, quite a bit of storm work, but I think, you know, apples to apples, it's, it'd be a pretty close switch to, to do that, if that's what you.
If we remove Booster off the reconstruction next year, we need to do something about the traffic. Either there's no parking on the side street, ban buses from that, because when someone gets out, it is a nightmare of people trying to get off McGregor, down Booster, get the leash while the buses are coming up Booster, which makes it a one-lane street when there's parking on this side. It's very unsafe, and it wasn't the plans to widen Booster a little bit. So even if you get parking here, you're still going to hopefully be able to have two-way traffic. So if we take Booster off the reconstruction schedule for next year to do all of Phillips, we need to do something about the safety issues.
Right, yeah. Well, it was just a suggestion of mine, it's whatever, whatever you guys, you know, work out or want to and what the rest of the council feels, it was just a suggestion that, you know, so.
I mean, yeah. It's kind of tomato-tomato type of, type of thing, you know, all, all the streets need work. You know, but yeah, we, we can, like I said, we can approve it tonight with the caveat of, you know, you guys go do the survey, survey.
Yeah, they're working on the survey for Phillips Street right now. We actually surveyed Booster Street earlier this year when we were going to add some blocks to Millen overlay project, because the pricing came in so good on this year's overlay project. We ended up just adding Kennedy, but we did do the survey for Booster already.
And I had talked to Wes previously, Wes Brown, about, you know, as we move forward with the design, if, because we do have so much going on, if we just decide, hey, it makes sense to drop one of these off, you know, assuming that it would be done the, the following year or shortly thereafter, all the, that field collection work and preliminary designs, all the work that can be picked up and reused. So it's not like we'd be spending money on design and, you know, it's wasted, we'll never get any value out of it. If we decide to shift things around, I mean, that data's already collected, so just use the process a little longer the next time around.
Yeah, I guess we can, we can get together and do some preliminary numbers just on those two blocks and see, you know, if it makes sense to keep them in there or remove Booster and add Phillips. Talk about that.
Just kind of from a funding standpoint, where we're at. So right now, this, this attachment here shows our revenues from our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one A bond series and then the different items that are using their force, the air for hangar, our tire truck purchase. And then we've got, you know, Moore Street, the industrial park, the Millen overlay project, which we're already done this year. And so for next year, we've got, you know, planned in there, you know, the North McCoy reconstruction, the design's already underway, parking lot reconstruction, two blocks of Booster, one block's Phillips, one point eight million dollars of Millen overlay. And that, you know, leaves us with a, you know, some of these are estimates, some of these are actuals. But, you know, right now we project that we've got about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that bond series still available if we want, you know, if Millen overlay goes over or if we want to use that the following year for a project. So in terms of funding-wise, I guess the, the short answer to your question is, dad was two blocks of Phillips. If, we, we, we could pay for that out of twenty twenty-one A bond series, it'd be fine. Just, you know, knowing that at that point, then we're really getting down to, you know, probably the, the last thing those funds would be held on for is for the, the future railroad crossing repairs, which are two years away. It basically takes definitely thousands of millions for that.
I guess I'd remind people that we several years ago, a few years ago, committed to a complete streets project, so now we're talking sidewalk to sidewalk when you look at redoing a street that you make sure the sidewalks are very walkable when the project's completed. Not just the street.
Yep, yeah, both the estimates for, for Booster and Phillips include sidewalk improvements for both sides. I know on the Main Street corridor, we just did pad ramps and sidewalks where they needed to be replaced, which is what we can look at to do if, if the main line sidewalk's in good shape and there's no disturbance from construction, we can definitely leave it in. Otherwise, in the, in the estimate, though, it does have full, full replacement for the sidewalk main line.
It sounds like we can move forward at least, and we can look at these options, you know, as you finish up your, you know, putting professional services and everything together.
Related side note, so next council meeting will have the proposed contract for the Millen overlay project on there, so we could.
A little more knowledge?
You know, if that, it would still be this contract, you know, just, just amended at that point. But in our work session, which we didn't have time to get to, had, you know, Millen overlay on there. Right now, budgeting about one point eight billion. Drop one block, which is about double the width, and then tentatively added four blocks that are much narrower. And then we're looking at possibly a section of North Street, potentially removing that or looking at some alternatives, just the condition is so poor that we don't think the Millen overlay is going to probably cut it. And then with this, we are also looking at including on Millen overlay, sidewalk connection. Right now, there's a gap on William Street between Nebraska and Gregor, so we can start the sidewalk there. And then we're also going to be blocking the sidewalks of the rest of this project and identifying if there's any long stretches of sidewalk that makes sense to, to require replacement. We had talked about if we want to maybe go through and basically, you know, do a, what we did several years ago by war in the sidewalk, you know, review and identify if it's going to be, you know, replaced. You know, that gets very, I guess, it'd be annoying, but not very attractive to the contractor in terms of pricing-wise. So we discussed a route, then kind of just maybe having one-off panels, remotely, if there's long stretch at that base, that's just to take care of at that point why, why we have contractors on site.
Well, yeah, the sidewalks, I was reminded last week why it's so important to have them at the safety code, or, you know, good with the safety code that we have. As I was in a hurry to go across one sixty-nine at a light, it was green, I was going across when I should, but I tripped just at the beginning because there was a limp on the highway, it was just a little bit higher than the sidewalk. And I hit a header, I did a nice roll, didn't hurt myself too bad. But I thought, you know, there's a lot of people walk out here, and if I did it, I guess anybody else could do it too. And it's, it's important that we keep our sidewalks safe.
So those installation of that sidewalk on South Williams, that goes into the project with the street project, or?
So, so this would be a, this would be the Millen overlay separate contract, which we're going to plan to have at the next council meeting.
Okay. I guess I'm asking, who's paying for that installation of the sidewalk?
That, I guess we're, I'm afraid to have this conversation, but those are tradition, then all the sidewalks have been assessed, and those are responsibilities of the property owner.
Still, okay.
And so it would be a matter of working with the property owner on either they install it or, you know, we can assess on the tax, if they just want to pay it. Sidewalks aboard are then responsible of the owner, it's just a matter of when they're required to be installed in the area.
Just clarifying, it's still that way.
Yeah, we would set it up that, you know, we, the city would contact the property owners and, you know, say if you can get the sidewalk replaced by a certain day, we won't do it with part of the project, but we'll, we'll probably get pricing with the project, because we're going to bid it out in the springtime. Obviously, nobody's going to do any concrete work for the next several months here. So if the property owners do it before, then we won't do it with the project, but we'll have provisions in the plan to at least get the pricing in and have the city pay for it and assess the property owner, if the property owner doesn't pay for it.
Any other questions for Matt or comments or anything?
Up the next resolution.
Oh, you're up two there, okay.
So if you guys want to do here.
So an entertaining motion then to Jacob's suggestion is to approve this resolution as, as presented here.
Motion to approve resolution.
All right.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Tyler, any other discussion? Hearing unvote, please, Deb?
Jody?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Brad? Yes. Rodney? Yes, sorry.
Tyler?
I got too quick.
John?
Motion carried. Agenda item number fourteen pertains to an agreement for general engineering services.
So, in twenty twenty, we started an annual agreement with Paul Manning, more or less to have him on call, he was a technical item that we need some assistance working through. So this resolution approves the proposed general engineering agreement for calendar year twenty twenty-two. The agreement's the same as, as last year is, except the, oh, the first twenty hours of the services at a discounted rate, and then after that, in terms of their typical pool rates. But that discounted rate this year went from eighty-five to ninety, otherwise that's the only difference. Through the end of November, we had paid approximately eleven thousand five hundred to Paul to make on the side of it. And it's, it's been for a variety of things from, you know, looking at terrain radiuses, signage, issues, you know, what options are for repair and replacement on, on different things. So we're kind of, it's one of those that we only use it and pay for it if we need it. So we recommend approval in twenty twenty-two to approve it.
Yeah, that, that, like I said, it's exactly the same as twenty twenty-one with the five-dollar rate increase for the first twenty hours of each month. I don't even know if we get to that over twenty hours really any month. But, yeah, it's basically for all non-specific project-related engineering services. And then it goes through the fee schedule for everything after the, the twenty hours. And we normally do the, the task amendments, resolutions to add projects to the, to the twenty twenty-two agreement, so.
Yeah, so this agreement holds all the, from contract language within it's, like the previous item, we have a project, we just adopt tasks to it, not the whole, whole contract.
Yep, so it goes, it goes through all of our, our rates and services that we provide. And then when you do want to do a project, we basically just have a resolution using these numbers to start a project.
What's the full rate?
Uh, the full rates are, they're specific to exactly what we're doing, whether it's survey or project management or design or, or inspection.
Okay.
And then, yeah, all of our, our other services for equipment with the no charge, just incidentally to the employee working down on the rate.
I think it's went well over the last year or two, so I, I'd recommend approval for approving the agreement for general service, engineering services.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney, a second from Don, any other discussion? Hearing unvote, please, Deb?
Jody?
Yes. Rodney? Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes. Tyler?
Motion carried, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Agenda item number fifteen pertains to approving our website redesign proposal.
This is what I had been wanting to get to for a long time. Well, we didn't have the communication manager on board. So after Joanne joined us, I had done some preliminary research back in April, June of this year, looking at potential website providers, our current providers, Municipal CMS or Municipal One is, I think, for new doing business ads and things. They're, you know, specializing in government websites, we looked at a few non-government providers who do that specialize in government. And the, I guess the, these, to summarize the research is, is what I heard from one of the vendors I've reached out to, and their comment was, well, if you don't like what Municipal One can do for you, I'm not sure, so do vendors, they're going to provide you anything that they, they can't already do. Our, our current website is very clunky, out of date, and we had looked at, is there a way that we can basically just revamp that and then make, you know, significant upgrades on our existing format? But the more we got into it, the time it takes to reorganize all of that is going to be significant. And then our, our current version of the website that we have, this last updated in twenty fourteen, so some of the services and just kind of functionality, even if we completely, you know, reorganized our existing site, we wouldn't be able to get. So as we're saying, it's been, you know, seven years since, since we did a website upgrade, it makes sense to do that again. So this propulible is for a one-time fee of four thousand nine hundred ninety-five. That's to, to work with staff, and I'm sure there will be some worksheets and certainly an opportunity for, for council to weigh in as well on what information we want there or what type of, except what site we like, what we don't like, our current website, what we don't like and what we like, and then we will build a full new website where our current one is live. And then once that website's finished, ready to go, we'll switch it over. A few of the big things that we'll have with post-change is we have, have received job applications online, have submission requests for building permits or other permits online, as well as just kind of improving overall the activity registration and payment for those, as well as if you want to rent a facility. And then another service that we, that we have with this is setting up an employee extranet. Since now all our city employees have a city website, you know, a lot of times we're relying on, you know, emails that, hey, print this off, make sure our employees get it, or here's a stack of memos, make sure everyone gets it. You know, what we could do this way is either go to the city website, you have your own unique username and password and access, so if you want to see, you know, our personnel policy, our safety policies, you know, our, our different memos, that way they can access that information directly as opposed to the, the chain that we currently have. So after, you know, I had done the, the research and decided it probably made more sense to stick with Municipal One. Then once Joanne was on board, I asked her to kind of do a pre-aided research and kind of what she thinks makes sense, and she agreed that it probably makes sense to stick with our current provider. So that's what we're proposing here for that one-time upgrade. And then the annual subscription cost will go up to eight thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars a year. Currently pay a little over two thousand. The main reason.
Um, the main reason for that increase is just on the backend functionality that comes with all these new features, to be able to make payments, submit forms online, jobs, uh, things like that. It just, uh, it takes, it takes more. And then it also includes all our, um, technical support that we have, which Municipal One has always been great with, when we do have questions. So that's a really good area. Timeline would be, uh, you know, we start, assuming this is approved, start later this month, and then hopefully looking at having something left to go live here early spring.
Move to approves, approve the proposal from Municipal One.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Harley, a second from Jody, any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. Agenda item number sixteen, uh, refers to an estate.
As part of an estate the city's a beneficiary of, we've been asked to consent to proposed, um, land sales as part of that estate. Um, so this is the motion to approve that consent and authorizing the mayor to sign it.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody, any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
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 Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number seventeen is a pay application for Teets Park Shelterhouse project.
This is payout number five, um, on the shelter house, uh, for a woman for seventeen thousand seventy-six dollars and fifty-two cents. The balance of the donation being retained is a hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars. They were going to be doing a half great work today, uh, but decided against it, uh, to come up in the wind, uh, but they're hoping to get to that, um, here later, um, yet this week. And then with the roof and gutters going on, um, later this week, which will allow them to get inside and start, um, interior finishes, so, um, it's, uh, starting to come together and hopefully we'll have a, a project that's done, um, here or very close to by the end of the calendar year.
Move to approve the pay application.
A motion from Don, a second from Tyler, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. Agenda item number eighteen refers to an application to FEMA.
This is, the title of the grant is, uh, FEMA Systems to Firefighter Grant Program, um, but is open to a variety of different services, including EMS. So if this application is for that EMS we'd like to submit is, uh, to pay for, not the ambulance that we currently already have ordered, but it would be the next ambulance, um, in the queue, so in twenty twenty-three. Uh, this application, it would be ninety-five percent federal money and then five percent, uh, local share. It's a very, very competitive application, so we'll see, uh, more things turn out. Um, but this, um, simply just authorizes the submission of the application, um, with the understanding that if it's awarded, the city would be responsible for, for five percent.
Move to approve the application.
I'll second.
A motion from Don, a second from Jody, any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
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 Motion carried. Agenda item number nineteen is, uh, setting a public hearing.
With the, um, twenty twenty census and redistricting that follows, the city has to, um, redraw our precincts. We also could this effort need to coordinate with the counties so they can draw the board of supervisory districts, uh, and that'll, that'll match up. So our precincts aren't, one precinct doesn't split them, one to supervisory districts, for example. So this actually simply approves, uh, or sets a public hearing for five P M. on December twentieth, it's a proposed hearing. This is a, the planning draft of a map for the proposed district change, um, the most recent version.
What changed? What changed?
Very little.
Do you know?
Added some land to the west outside the airport. Maybe, John, what, what's more, what's the yellow, is that word?
One, yeah.
Might have changed a couple blocks. Yeah, very little. And I have all of the boundary lines and stuff too, that I can send out to you, so you know.
Please do.
Is there a committee that puts this together or the proposal?
The county works, has a committee together, and I've got Luke Snyder, from the county, he's their G I S guy.
Just couldn't tell by the looks of it.
Yeah, it's experimental.
We do have, uh, with the, our current board map is very similar on our website, because I can get a link to that.
I found it once, but you're right. I found it once.
I did find it, I have it saved, so everybody needs it right now.
I should have done that.
Actually, I think you're going to find this actually looks better than the last one. As I recall, word three really had a finger coming down to McGregor, and, uh, now it looks like it's much wider.
Looks like a pretty big board, two or three, yeah.
Motion to approve the public hearing.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody, any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number twenty, um, is to consider an application for property tax exemption.
Uh, tax payment application from the owners of twenty-three oh seven Eastland Drive, who constructed a new residential property, uh, they've proposed for five years, a hundred percent, and spoken to the area and recommended approval.
Move to approve. Have a motion from Harley, a second from Don. Tyler.
Tyler.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you for your investment in Algonia, and we are sure you'll enjoy your new home. So agenda item number twenty-one, uh, pertains to the Planning and Zoning Commission and appointment there to fill the remainder of Tony Ram's term, which expires the first of January of two thousand twenty-four. Do we have, um, a name in mind? Nobody yet, okay, so we'll do some asking and see if we can appoint that then at our next meeting. Agenda item number twenty-two, uh, this is a mayoral appointment for Housing Commission, we have two, um, terms there. I have visited with Morgan Kicker, and she would like to renew her term. And as Kathy Nelson is retiring from Iowa State Bank, she recommends Ben Stone, and he hasn't expressed an interest, yes, in filling her position. So I would bring those two names, Morgan Kicker and Ben Stone, um, to the council for approval. Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Yes.
Brad? Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number twenty-three, this is the second notification for, uh, Mary Toomey and Jeff Gilmore. Their appointments on the Planning and Zoning Commission expire January first of this, um, upcoming year, two thousand twenty-two. So this is just the second notification, but, uh, we're able to appoint, they're eligible for appointments then on, uh, our next council meeting. And then agenda item number twenty-four also is a second notification, future appointment for Broadband Telecommunication Commission. John Bond's term expires the end of this calendar year, January the thirty-first, and that position is also eligible, um, during our December twentieth city council meeting. So this was just the second notification here. Which brings us then to agenda item number twenty-five, which is closed session to, uh, enter into, uh, closed session to discuss strategy for upcoming union negotiations. And this is per Iowa Code, section twenty point seventeen point three. I would entertain a motion then to move into closed session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
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 Rodney? Don?
Motion carried, thank you. At six twenty-one, we'll move into closed session, so thank you very much.